John Kofalas is currently a Larimer County Commissioner, elected to his second term in two thousand twenty-two, and previously served many years as a Colorado State Representative, and later State Senator. He previously worked in education, advocacy, and outreach with special emphasis on career development, housing, and serving the underserved and marginalized. He got his botany degree from Colorado State University, a master's in teaching certificate from Fairleigh Dickinson University, and has continued a life of service to cause that is an inspiration to many. John has a reputation for being one of the most progressive political figures in northern Colorado, and we spend a lot of time in this episode pulling back the curtain on how things really work behind the scenes in government, and respectfully challenging one another's ideas of how they should work. This get-to-know episode goes beyond most you'll find, and includes a dramatic segment where John shares his challenges faced as a man of short stature. So please enjoy, and thanks for tuning in to my conversation with Larimer County Commissioner, John Kofalas.
Let's have some fun.
Welcome to the Loco Experience Podcast. On this show, you'll get to know business and community leaders from all around northern Colorado and beyond. Our guests share their stories, business stories, life stories, stories of triumph and of tragedy, and through it all, you'll be inspired and entertained. These conversations are real and raw, and no topics are off limits. So pop in a breath mint and get ready to meet our latest guest. Welcome back to the Loco Experience Podcast. I'm honored today to be joined by Larimer County Commissioner John Kofalas, and longtime public servant here in northern Colorado. And so, John, thank you for making time to be here.
I'm very happy to be here, Kurt, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah. So I think the obvious first question is, is what do county commissioners do anyway? And I know you can't summarize it all, but...
Well, yeah, that's, that's an important question, and a lot of times folks don't know. But to answer your question, so there are three county commissioners, Larimer County Commissioners. In Colorado, there are sixty-four counties.
Okay.
The ones that most populated, of course, along the front range.
Right.
So sixty-four counties, most of the counties have three commissioners. There are some that have five commissioners. But in terms of what we do, we do a variety of things. It's kind of interesting. I've learned since being the commissioner, and I just started my second term, well, one thing that's important for folks to know is that we are elected at large. So even though you have to live in a particular district, there are three districts, three commissioners. So for example, I live in District One, which is in the northern one-third of the county. So from Drake Road and town in Fort Collins, all the way up to the Wyoming border, all the way west to Jackson County, Cameron Pass, and then all the way east out to Weld County. So you have to live in the district, but when you're up for election or perhaps reelection, then it's at large.
So the whole county votes.
Exactly.
Oh, that's fascinating.
So that's how it works. In terms of what we do, I mean, we dabble in all three branches of government, and I think that's important for folks to understand. So we, the executive branch, of course, at the state level will be the governor and all that.
Sure.
But we serve as, as the executive branch because we oversee the county budget.
Almost like the governor's arm in this county.
Yeah.
In some ways.
Absolutely. So we oversee the budget, the various departments and service, service areas, and then we also serve in the legislative branch because we deal with policy issues. And then finally, we serve in the judicial or quasi-judicial realm, because when we have land use hearings, then we're supposed to, you know, not have what's called ex parte communication. In other words, like a judge, we have to stay focused on the hearing and all the information that's received. So we dabble in all three branches of government. We oversee the budget. We work on policy like affordable housing, childcare, you know, the bread and butter issues that are facing a lot of us. And we also make land use decisions. We update our land use code and so forth.
Are you, on the executive side, does like the regulatory obligation of business and industry come through your office too in a sort of fashion?
Yes, and that's, you know, the regulatory side...
Liquor licenses and different things like that?
Yes, so liquor licenses, you know, they, they, once they've been approved initially, then typically it's a consent agenda item where an entity, a business, wants to renew their liquor license unless there are some issues. But initially, when they want to apply for a liquor license, they actually, we have a hearing, and, and the applicants come to us, we have our, our attorney there, and we go through a pretty formal process. And generally, we approve folks if they've met all the criteria from the state. So yes, we do oversee things like that. And then when it comes to our land use code and building code, you know, ultimately, if those things come to the commissioners for a hearing, we make decisions on that as well. And that certainly can impact businesses, and I can give you, you know, lots of examples.
I'm sure. Well, I just, we're kind of getting into current events with this question, but I just saw that Los Angeles city or county banned all oil production inside the county, and I was shocked at how much oil production there actually was. There's lots of old grasshoppers still steadily pumping away over there. Would that be a county-level thing? Is it county of Los Angeles in that kind of space?
Good question, Kurt, very good question. And so, the legislature, back in two thousand and nineteen, passed a bill, Senate Bill nineteen dash one eighty-one, in the state senate. And essentially, what that bill did, among other things, is it gave local jurisdictions, counties, much more authority, you know, to create their own local or county-wide oil and gas regulations.
Yeah.
So since that occurred, prior to that, we didn't really have any oil and gas regulations in Larimer County. So to your question, we do now, we've gone through a process over the last couple of years, and we do have...
There's kind of granted rights in that space of sorts.
Yes, but we have, within our land use code, which is the regulatory authority that we have, there is a, there is a section in there that deals with oil and gas development. And so if there's a, a business or an operator that wishes to do a new oil and gas development, they have to go through the county process, submit an application, and ultimately, if they're to be approved, there are a lot of review criteria and all of that. So yeah, that's an example of the county's involvement in, in regulations that were updated since two thousand and nineteen, and they are in place. For example, like what's happening right now, you speak of current events, one of the proposed oil and gas developments that is being considered in the town on the east side of Loveland, west of I-25, the McWinnies, they have a proposal for an oil and gas development. But because that is in the town limits of Loveland, we don't have direct say over that. And right now, Loveland doesn't really have, I think they're developing their oil and gas regs, so they're kind of in the middle of all that.
Yeah, yeah.
I hope that, that responds to your question.
No, I think so, I think so. Another thing I was thinking about as far as current events is the, the carriage house and the accessory dwelling units and stuff that was here in, in Larimer County. When you say land use, that's kind of the big picture stuff, but it seems, seems like that was a city of Fort Collins thing more than it was a county?
Yeah, yes, and, and all, all good observations and all good questions. So the county's jurisdiction primarily is in the unincorporated parts of the county.
Gotcha.
So where there's what's called a GMA, a growth management area, you know, around, you know, for example, around the city of Fort Collins, that's why, where there has to be a lot more cooperation, partnership on a variety of issues, including land use issues. So the, the whole discussion debate regarding the, the city of Fort Collins land use code or land development code as they attempted to change it, that was really a local issue. Our land use code specifically applies to land use decisions within the unincorporated area.
Yeah, yeah.
If there's a, a proposal that's within the growth management area, like whether it's Timnith or Wellington, or the city of Fort Collins, then there has to be...
If we're gonna grow into this space, we don't want you to be, like, I'm thinking about East Mulberry now, that will be part of the city of Fort Collins eventually, but Larimer County shouldn't necessarily approve buildings and structures and stuff that aren't, that are way far away from what the city's gonna want to have when they get that property annexed.
Absolutely. And so right now, the East Mulberry corridor, there's a lot of discussion about, you know, perhaps in phases, annexing that property. I mean, right now, if you look at the map, it's kind of a puzzle, you know, a puzzle where, you know, some parts are in, in the county, and, and then of course, some parts are already within the city limits. But I think the long-term goal is for everything out to, you know, to I-25 and on the west side of I-25 will be annexed into the city of Fort Collins. And what does that mean? It means a lot of things.
A lot of new sidewalks out there.
Well, new sidewalks, you know, the, there'll be a shift, although it'll have to be cooperation on, on public safety or law enforcement issues.
Right.
Because right now...
Oh, sheriff patrols it out there now.
Exactly, I mean, spot on. And, and, and so the, the Fort Collins Police Services will take over those responsibilities, but of course, there always has to be collaboration and, and all of that. And, and even, of course, I'm sure one of the issues that people are thinking about is if you're in the city, then you're paying the city sales tax.
Right.
If you're in the county, you're not paying the city sales tax.
Yeah, when I got engaged years ago, I used to live down in Greenview Court, I think, or something like that, south of Fort Collins, and that was a little pocket of county. And the lady was like, here, let me help you out. I'll, I'll deliver this to you and save you two hundred bucks on your engagement rings tax, or maybe not that much, but something significant. And, you know, good, good for her to be observational of that, I guess.
Yes, and you're bringing up a lot of really important stuff, and, and there's definitely a lot of interplay, you know, intersection between what the municipalities do. There are eight municipalities, either wholly or in part within Larimer County. I think currently, the population of Larimer County is about three hundred and seventy thousand folks, and I think a little, around fifty percent of those folks are in the city of Fort Collins.
Right, right.
But indeed, that's part of the county, but again, the city has the direct jurisdiction over land use stuff within the city, you know, and a variety of other things. In the growth management area, we gotta work together for sure.
So I want to go a little bit more macro right away with, there's fifty-four counties, and there's county commissioners at all. Is there a connection between all those counties that are outside of, like, the governor's office or things like that? I mean, do you have your own little secret meetings off to the side, or how's that work?
Well, if I may, in terms of the number of counties within the state of Colorado, it's actually sixty-four.
Sixty-four, I'm sorry.
Sixty-four counties. And it's interesting, because for example, you've got, and I will get to your question.
That's fine.
Sometimes I digress.
I chase squirrels, I'm a world-class squirrel chaser.
You gotta bring me back, you gotta bring me back.
I will, that's my job.
Of course, but just as an example, so Larimer County is, you know, is one of the fastest-growing counties, and we know all the implications of that, we can get into that if you'd like. And we have about three hundred and seventy thousand folks. And then you, to the west is Jackson County.
Right.
Jackson County has about fifteen hundred folks.
Right, and nine hundred of them are in Walden.
Nine hundred of them are in Walden.
Or something like that, right?
But, so sixty-four counties, and to your question, there is, nothing is in secret, you know, other than executive sessions and things of that nature. You know, all the meetings that the county does, the other counties do, you know, have to be in a public setting, you know, for all the reasons. But there is, there are two statewide associations that actually represent the interests of the counties, primarily at the state level in the legislature. And, you know, right now, the legislature is in session, it's, it's fast and furious. So there is something called CCI, or Colorado Counties Inc., and that's a statewide association. You know, like most entities, they have, you know, the city of Fort Collins, for example, has the color, is part of the Colorado Municipal League. The counties, most of them, are part of Colorado Counties Inc., CCI, and they, they have lobbyists, they have staff, we pay dues, et cetera, but ultimately, they represent the interests of the counties with regard to legislation that's being introduced and that could be, become law. There's also another statewide group that's newer in the last five or six years, that's called, the acronym is CCAT, C-C-A-T, and that stands for Commissioner, Counties and Commissioners Acting Together. So two statewide organizations, and they primarily represent, you know, the, our interests at the state level with regards to legislation and all of that.
Well, and, like, who are the enemies of the counties in, in terms of represent, who are you pushing against? Is it cities, like, being kind of too big for their britches kind of thing, and thinking they can push you guys around, or is it the state that's trying to make you do things that they don't give you any money to try to accomplish? Like, what are those kind of friction points that you're advocating for?
I, I would submit that it's all of that, but for example, when you, you cited the state trying to make us do things or requiring...
Unfunded mandates.
Yeah, that's the term that, yeah, and, and there's that, and so that's, that's...
Or funded mandates, right, those are better.
But, but even there, you know, one of the things that I'm learning through the lens of county commissioner, because as you know, and perhaps some of the listeners know, I served twelve years in the state legislature, in the House and in the Senate. So you have various lenses. Now I have a county commissioner lens, and things like unfunded mandates, issues like local control, those resonate a lot. And so oftentimes, there are well-meaning bills that are undermining local control, and, and that's, that's an example of a serious friction point, I mean...
And let me put some words into your mouth, because I've heard you talk before...
Oh dear.
And say basically that, you know, my beliefs don't necessarily align here, but the people that I represent, the people in my district, believe this way, and so that's why I'm supporting this thing. And so what I, I'm jumping ahead, but I think what I hear you saying is now my job is county commissioner. I'm here to represent local control and local interests for my district and my people. And so my job in some ways is quite a bit different than when I was in the, the state with representatives thing. That was a different role.
Yes, and I would say that's an accurate assessment or observation. And, and, you know, any person who's elected to public office, you know, you have, you win by a certain majority, and then some people think, well, then you only represent the interests of the people who voted for you.
Yeah.
You know, sometimes I'll have folks come up to me and they're asking me for something, you know, and it's appropriate and all of that, and they'll say, and I voted for you. And, and I like to remind folks that, I, I hope you can believe this, it doesn't matter. I mean, ultimately, we get elected, we get elected by a majority, not everyone votes for you, but in the end, if you're going to be an authentic public servant, elected person, you gotta try to represent the interests of everyone. And that's not easy, you know, there's, you know, you try to find some middle ground, you try to find some compromise, but in the end, certainly as a county commissioner, I want to represent the interests of folks, you know, at the state level, because there are all these bills that, that even though they might have good intentions, there's, there's tons of, you know, we call...
You're kind of a student of unintended consequences as well.
Well, yes, yes, and, and, and when I was in the legislature, I, I tried really hard. Sometimes you can't prevent it a hundred percent, but you, if you're a good policymaker, whether at the county level or at the state level, or certainly at the federal level, what is the problem you're trying to solve? And, and is there a role for government? And are, are you addressing, are you considering any potential unintended consequences?
Yeah, I like it, I like it. I think we can talk a lot more about evolution of thought and philosophies and things like that, but it might actually be grounding to jump in the time machine and go back to young John, third grade, or wherever, where'd you come from? Are you northern Colorado native?
The old time machine, eh?
Yeah, we have one here.
Back, back, back to the future. So, thank you, and I appreciate, this is a, this is a fun conversation that we're having, and I hope it's informative for folks. But, so basically, I, I'm not a Colorado native. I actually grew up in Brooklyn, New York.
Oh, wow.
I was born in Piraeus, Greece.
Oh, wow.
You know, my family's first generation, it's a long story, you don't need to necessarily hear about why I was born there, but ultimately, I grew up, most of my, you know, growing up years were in, in, in Brooklyn, New York.
I'd like to hear the, the, the short story, the Cliff Notes version at least. My wife and I have traveled Greece, where is Piraeus?
Well, so if you have ever taken the ferries...
And I'm one-eighth Greek, by the way.
Really?
One of my grandfather, great-grandfathers was adopted through Lutheran Social Services as an orphan.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Well, so my parents, first-generation Greek immigrants, my father came over in the thirties. They're from, we're from an island that's called Hios, which is very close to Turkey. It's about ten miles away, it's in the northeastern part of the Aegean, it's a really amazing place.
I've been to Ephesus.
Oh, yes.
So it's pretty close to there, I reckon.
Spot on, yes. Samos is closer to Ephesus, but we're just north there, but very close to the Turkish neighborhood.
Those rugs in the lobby, the one in the bathroom and the one in the, in the lobby, are from a Turkish, a rug maker, and my wife and I, when we went there the first time, bought one, and then he runs around the country once every five years or something selling rugs, and he always calls when he's coming through town.
Yeah.
Anyway, I digress.
Oh, that's good.
I want to hear about your family coming here in the thirties. Was that like strife in Greece that led to that?
You know, like a lot of, you know, folks in those days, they come for more economic opportunity and all that. So my father came over, he was, he barely had, excuse me, a high school diploma, and ultimately, he got his US citizenship by serving four years in World War II. So he served in World War II, most of his life, he didn't have a whole, you know, college education. I was the, you know, I was the first one to go to college and graduate. I have two siblings, I'm the oldest and so on. So he worked mostly in the diners.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what diners are?
Sure.
And in the restaurant business. And, and, and then he met my mother, they got married, and then she decided to go back to the old country, and that's why I was born there.
Okay.
Otherwise, I should have been born in Brooklyn.
Are you a dual citizen?
I was a dual citizen for the longest time, but I, and I'm a naturalized citizen, but, you know, US citizen, of course. So that's why I was born there, but I have a lot of connections there, a lot of family. My younger, my younger sister, she married a Greek fellow, and they live in Athens, for example.
Okay. Is your mother, was she from Greece too?
Yeah, yep.
She was, okay.
Yeah, we're about as Greek as they come.
Yeah, yeah.
And if you've ever watched the movie My Big Fat Greek Wedding...
Sure.
What I often tell folks, that ninety-eight percent of that is accurate, and I can relate to all that.
And that's my family that looks like my, my mom's aunt.
I had a, I had a ya-ya, I had a grandmother like that, and so on. So a lot of connections with Greece, and, and that's part of my heritage.
Yeah.
And, and that, you know, that's part of my journey. And I try to go back periodically when I can to visit...
Very cool.
And, and to go to the island of Hios.
For what it's worth, very early in my career, Spiro Palmer was one of the most encouraging men in my world. Like, in my second or third year of banking, he kind of took a shine to me and really encouraged me to become wise, and he would just always talk about smart things, and I know his boys and stuff like that too, still.
Yeah, and he's a good friend and his family, and then of course, you must know the owner of Tony's and the whiskey, Tony Katopodis.
I don't, but he should be a guest on the podcast one of these days.
You should think about that. So his wife, Angela, passed away a number, about five years ago, and he's still struggling with that. But his, his son owns, I think, you know, Tony's Bar, and then...
I go to the whiskey once in a while.
Yeah.
Tony's, I used to, but I'm a little, a little responsible for that now.
I need to go to there, but I haven't yet. Nevertheless, they're, they're good people, and, and they have a, a good history here, and, you know, they've been contributing members in so many ways. Spiro Palmer with his, you know, and how he's built, you know, he's been a very successful businessperson.
For sure.
And he's always given back to the community, and I would, I would offer that that's a key component to being a successful businessperson.
Yeah.
Is giving back, you know?
Is that specifically Greek culture too, or is that more of an American thing? Is there as much kind of charity and giving back? Because we always hear America's the most charitable country. Yeah.
Well, I would say that, for me, a lot of that is coming from my father. He, he passed away, he was pretty young, because he smoked cigarettes for the longest time, and that didn't help. But he passed away in nineteen eighty-two, when he was, I think, sixty-seven.
Yeah.
But, you know, what, what he left with me is, he didn't have much, but he would always put others ahead of him.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think that, you know, that, that really stuck with me, although I'll, I'll never forget, I went back to, after I came back from the Peace Corps, and that's an important part of my journey, I decided to pursue my master's degree closer to New York so that I could spend time with him, because I sort of had a feeling he wasn't going to be around much longer.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and I, I remember that we really made a lot of connections about some of the, the advocacy and the work that I was doing over, and since, especially since coming back from my experiences in the Peace Corps.
You probably had your eyes open quite a bit by that time.
I had my eyes open quite a bit. And one of the things that left me with my dad, my father, was that he would always say, yeah, I get it why you want to try to make the world better and things of that nature, but he said, before you do that, you have to have your, you're like this, you have to have your own pot to piss in.
Yeah, no, I've been accused of, of, I have a phrase I've shared for years, ask of your needs and share of your abundance? And been scolded a few times of like, hey, you need to actually build some abundance before you can share it. Like, you're trying so hard to, to give that you need to actually get your own pot to piss in first.
Great, and I think, I think there's a lot of value and truth to that, absolutely. And you, you can also tell that I'm Greek or Mediterranean, because I use my hands a lot.
Yeah, you're hitting the microphone and stuff.
I'll have to try to control that.
As I'm gonna have to pour you that whiskey so that you have something to do with your hand.
Perhaps.
So I want to, before we like leave New York and go to master's school and Peace Corps and stuff, I want to hear about you as a young man. How many, you said you had two siblings as well?
Yeah, so I have my, my, both of them are younger, my sister and my brother, there were three of us, and, and we grew up in New York, and...
Kind of a, was it like a Greek neighborhood even, where you had a lot of that? Or is it all mixed, and there's Puerto Ricans over here, Mexicans over there, and whatever?
You're good. I guess you've been around the block a few times, I suppose.
You know, I watch TV, Netflix.
But, but you know, it's interesting that, you know, it was a very, well, I want to say ethnically diverse neighborhood, but back in, in, when we were growing up, there was a strong Greek community, there were various Greek Orthodox churches, you know, in terms of, you know how it is in, I think you know how it is in, in, in big cities, you know, there, there are waves of the different...
Yeah, the Irish came at this time, and then the Greeks came at this time.
You know, there was a time when it was Scandinavian, Norwegian, Greeks, others, you know, and all of them were the European immigrant...
The Mediterranean stayed away from North Dakota where I grew up, because they were like, it's cold over there.
Although...
But the Norwegians and stuff settled more.
Although there is a somewhat vibrant Greek community, for example, out in Meeker.
Oh, is that right?
Because Greeks migrated to why, and there's even a really amazing Greek Orthodox church up in Cheyenne, which you would never think. But my understanding is that a lot of Greeks are, are many families migrated out here for sheep, to, to raise sheep and to do ranching and that kind of work.
That makes sense.
So...
Yeah, so like, we're here in New York, and New York's kind of busy, kind of lame, nothing like any part of Greece really, and they got sheep country out there.
Yep, but no, very diverse, you know, I grew, I know what delicatessens are, you walk up to the avenue, you go to the fish store to buy the fish, you go to the vegetable store to buy the vegetables, and then over time, a lot of those stores were, you know, more people from the Middle East, you know, moved into the neighborhoods, certainly people from Asia, so it's changed a lot as, as, as things are over the years. And then, you know, you mentioned, you know, different ethnic groups like Puerto Rican and so forth. I remember growing up, and, and there was some, you know, some ethnic or racial strife that there was a dividing line. We lived on, where we grew up, we were lucky, the first couple of years, we lived in an apartment building, but then my, my father was able to buy this house on, on a corner lot, like an old, just an amazing house, and we lived on what was called Sixty-Eighth Street, and then Second Avenue or Ridge Boulevard. But Sixty-Fifth Street was always considered the quote dividing line, and below that, where, where, where Puerto Rican folks lived, and, and that was always an interesting tension or dynamic.
Yeah, yeah.
So there was some of that growing up, but overall, it was an amazing experience. I, I...
Were you a good student and athlete, any of those things?
I liked, you know, like a lot of kids growing up in the, in the city, I liked playing basketball. I know that might be a little surprising.
Yeah, you didn't have a career in the NBA.
No, although I, I had some friends who I went to junior high school with that ultimately went into the NBA.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, so I, I enjoyed sports, I was never much of an athlete, I was good academically, you know, certain things were of interest to me, and, you know, I remember, because there, you know, we have a bus system, so you would take the bus to go to, you know, I, I went to William McKinley Junior High School, Fort Hamilton High School, and, and so, public school, PS one oh two, so I have a lot of memories of all that. Fort Hamilton High School, uh, and, and so, uh, public school, PS one oh two. So, I have a lot of memories of all that. And, and again, growing up in the city or a place like New York is, is different.
I'm feeling like you're a really curious guy and wanted to learn a lot. And like, I was that close from signing up for Peace Corps when I was leaving high school, cause I was so curious about the rest of the world. But I grew up in such a very rural environment.
Where was that now?
Uh, central North Dakota.
That's where you were.
Uh, near Jamestown is where I grew up. And so, graduated a class of five, really didn't have any exposure. I was scared to death when I went to North Dakota State University, cause I'd never, barely been to big towns, you know? And so, a lot of contrast, but a lot of curiosity. And so, uh, I suspect that we might have some similar wiring in that space.
Yes, and, and, and maybe to fast forward a tiny bit. So, I graduated from high school in nineteen seventy-two.
Okay.
And within the Greek culture, like within a lot of cultures, you don't ask questions. You, you either, you know, find a good job or you go to college.
Right.
And so, I wound up going to City College of New York for a year and a half.
Okay.
And, um, uh, not really sure why, but I, I did well. But I, again, it wasn't really.
Well, if you're not really sure why, it's all right to do well.
So, it, it turns out I went for a year and a half, you know, beyond high school. And then I, uh, friends and, and it explains why I'm out here in Colorado now for forty-five plus years. So, I took a semester off from college, CCNY, and I wound up working in a, uh, fast food place. And so, that was an interesting experience. Uh, I was in the, the, um, the, the French fries department. And, uh, you know, that was, back then, it was a chain, but it was very different than all the chains, you know? And I remember working with a bunch of old Greek guys, you know, doing.
Was it a Euros fast food?
No, it was, it was a, you know, it was regular hamburgers and all the rest. So, I did that. I saved up money. And then, uh, three friends and I and a little dog, we, um, we took a trip out west. And we went to Montana, Wyoming and Colorado to see the Rocky Mountains. Cause we really didn't know much about that.
Sure.
And I fell in love with the, you know, the Rocky Mountains. And, um, there were a lot of adventures there. And, and I remember we were coming out of the Tetons, the Grand Tetons up in Wyoming. We had just, uh, we were completing, um, a few day backpack trip. And we met, we met up with a, a ranger, a backcountry ranger. And I think we might've gotten ticketed because back.
You weren't supposed to be there.
Well, we had the dog with us.
Oh, right.
And you know how, and that was back in nineteen seventy-four. But we're coming out and he says to us, um, after he noticed the dog, little puppy and all that, have you heard the news? I said, no, we've been, um, you know, we've been in the backcountry for the last few days. And it turns out that was August of seventy-four, right around the time that, uh, Richard Nixon, uh, resigned. So, that was really interesting.
Interesting, yeah. That's when I was born, actually, was August of seventy-four.
Really? But long story short.
I don't remember anything about the Nixon stuff being a big deal at the time. Anyway, keep going, please.
No, just, long story short, uh, I mean, I fell in love with the Rocky Mountains and it actually motivated me, inspired me to go back and, and do better in school. And, and I, I determined that I wanted to be a forest ranger. Why not?
Yeah.
And, and so, I, I went back and I attended a, a community college, actually. And I did well. Then I got my GPA. And I took all the, you know, all, all the coursework that I think really interested me.
Yeah.
And then it was time to apply to schools. And I actually applied to, um, various schools. But the two that I was accepted to with, one was the University of Montana in Missoula.
Oh, yeah.
And the other one was Fort Lewis College in Durango. And, and so, I decided to go to, um, Fort Lewis College in Durango. And I was there for a year and that was an amazing experience. Um, and then ultimately, after a year, I transferred up to CSU, Colorado State University. And I started, I completed my bachelor's degree, Bachelor of Science in Botany at CSU nineteen seventy-six to nineteen seventy-eight. So, I've, I've, um.
Do you know Phil Murphy? Phil Murphy's in my Rotary Club and I think he, oh, he might've got his education in Alaska, but he served a long time as a forest ranger out here.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Which Rotary Club is that?
Uh, the Breakfast Rotary Club, Thursday mornings at Ginger and Baker at seven AM, if you're interested.
Yeah, I, I bet to various and it's always an interesting interaction. And certainly, the service clubs do amazing work. The Rotary Club does amazing work, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
Well.
I'll sell you a ticket for our, uh, ten K raffle coming up here in a little bit.
A ten K raffle as in a running race or?
No, uh, ten K, like we.
Oh, ten thousand.
The winner gets ten thousand dollars. Yeah, so we sell five hundred tickets at a hundred bucks apiece. So, we raise fifty, give somebody ten. And then, uh, do good work in the community with the other forty.
Well, we can talk about that offline.
We'll put you on the spot right now. So, so you, you get up to, to Fort Collins. And what was the motivation? Was it a better education experience? Just not quite such the boonies? Fort Collins was still already Fort Fun in those days?
It wasn't the latter because I, I, you know, I, I was not, um, you know, I, I didn't, I wasn't a real big party person. I, I actually, in New York, I was a bit of a party person. And, and to be honest, uh, full disclosure, that was part of my motivation for, um.
Get out of there.
Get out of, thank you. Get, get out of there. I needed to change. And a lot of folks, uh, you know, cause there were issues with people involved with alcohol and substances and all that. And, and, and I was on the periphery of that, but I.
Oh, and that was like not long after Woodstock and different things like that too, right?
It's interesting.
You were LSD in and all, uh, you don't have to talk about it here.
Well, but I actually did ask my parents if I could go to Woodstock nineteen sixty-nine, but I was only in junior high school. And they said, no. However, however, nineteen seventy-three, I did go with a friend of mine. And this is what, this might come later, but, um, uh, with a friend of mine to Watkins Glen, New York, to see a, a, I think it was a, a festival of sorts. But it was, um, the Grateful Dead, the Allman Brothers Band and the band. I mean, it was amazing.
Yeah.
And we drove from New, cause back then, we were into sports cars. The first car I ever owned was a nineteen sixty-five MGB.
Oh, sweet.
And this, and this, uh, friend of mine, Rick, who, uh, wound up working for the post office, he had a nineteen fifty-nine MGA. And we drove it all the way up to Watkins Glen and, and, um, you know, that was an experience like this.
I'm sure. Um, and so, let's come up, bring it back to, uh, CSU. You get engaged in the Fort Collins community, get your degree finished up. Now, did, was the Peace Corps before some of this or after college?
It was after.
Okay.
It was after. So, um, being in, in Fort Lewis, Durango exposed me to the Four Corners area and, and Canyon Country, Utah. And I got, started getting involved in environmental kinds of issues. And that carried over when I came up to CSU. And I was involved in, in various, um, act, you know, various endeavors. It was like something called Colorado State, State University, CSU EcoCor, Environmental Corps. We used to have a radio program back in the day called Ecologic. Um, so there were all those kinds of things.
Yeah.
And, and I think that was really important to me. It helped shape me in my journey. Graduated with my bachelor's degree in, in, um, like I said, in, in May of seventy-eight. And, and then I decided, I had applied for Peace Corps. And so, it was after. And it was, um, February of nineteen seventy-nine when I was accepted. Originally, Peace Corps had said I would go to Africa to what was then known as Zaire. And now is the Democratic Republic of Congo.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
So, uh, that, they said, no, we, we're canceling that.
It's a little too sketchy right now.
Too sketchy right now. And then instead, I wound up going to El Salvador, uh, which was even more sketchy.
That's what I was gonna say.
Exactly. So, I, um.
And that's where you picked up your Spanish.
That's where, that's, yes, yes, sir. I, that's where I learned my Spanish. You know, my, my native language is Greek. Growing up, we spoke Greek. So, I actually speak Greek. On good days, I speak pretty good English.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, and then Spanish has mostly stayed with me. And it's a, it's a good tool to have. It's a gift, it's a gift. So, yeah, Salvador. And it turns out that, um, when I went in in February of seventy-nine, it was still a, a military dictatorship there. A lot of things were starting to happen. And then ultimately, they evacuated us out of the country. So, I was only there for about thirteen months or so. Um, and, uh, but it was an, it was, you know, it was an amazing, life-changing, transformative experience. And I, as you said earlier, Kurt, it, it certainly opened my eyes, yes.
Yeah, yeah, fair enough. Um, and then what? What from there? Was you done with your pro-, cause it was a two-year program typically. Did they let you out early? Cause you had to get evacuated or you gotta go clean gutters somewhere?
Yeah.
State side?
So, I ca-, I came back, uh, in nineteen eighty, um, and I had the option of being reassigned. They were looking at having me go to Honduras, Honduras or Jamaica, Jamaica. And I, I came back to the States and I gave that a lot of, a lot of deliberation, a lot of thought. And in the end, I decided it would be too difficult to pick up the pieces and start all over again. We were doing actually really good work. I worked as an agricultural extensionist. And we were doing a lot of things related to, for example, soil and water conservation.
Yeah.
Uh, I was working it towards the end when I was informed that, uh, by the way, uh, you have to be out of the country in a week. And nobody ever let me know that, cause I was five hours away from the capital, San Salvador. But we were working with a group of women to establish, um, a co-op, uh, where they would raise chickens and sell, you know, sell the product and sell the eggs and all of that. And then all of a sudden, you know, things, um, got the way they did.
Yeah.
And it was getting pretty serious there. There was a lot of violence, um, all, all sorts of things. And then there were some Peace Corps volunteers that were working in the, in the city, in the, with people in the market there, the great, the big market. And, and then there were some folks from the left, the FMLN who came and, uh, you know, took over the market. And, um, some of these Peace Corps volunteers were, were held. Uh, um, so, long story short, I, I came back. I decided, um, that what I had seen and experienced, that I needed to stay here in, in our country to try to make things, you know, to.
More better here.
Educate people, to make people aware of, of that. Unfortunately, sometimes, um, our government is not on the right side of history. And the kinds of, you know, what we supported in Central America.
I'm excited to talk about Russia, Ukraine. We'll see how that flows out. Uh, maybe we'll hit that in the political section later. So, what did you go about to do? And were you kind of an activist, kinda raising awareness for then, uh, El Salvador and things?
All, all of that. So, when I first came back, I wound up, um, I, I came back here, cause this is, you know, this was my home base. I wanted, I decided I wanted to be a teacher. I had my undergraduate degree. And so, that's where I wound up going to, um, it's called Fairleigh Dickinson University in, in Teaneck, New Jersey.
Okay.
And part of the reason I went there was, one is, cause it was closer to my dad. And it was a good decision for two reasons. One is that, um, I got to spend the last year that he was alive, you know, together.
Yeah.
And we made a lot of really powerful connections.
Yeah.
And also, my future wife, Beth.
That's where you found her?
Well, and, and she actually, we grew up in the same neighborhood together, but we kinda hung out with different groups. And her dad was a Lutheran pastor. Her, her mom was a schoolteacher. But he had the church, um, a Lutheran church, like, you know, two blocks away from where I grew up.
Greek?
No, she.
I was gonna say, not that many Greek Lutherans, really.
No, not that many. But, um, that was one of the things, especially for my mother, that she had to get used to.
Yeah.
Uh, if you ever watched the, um, the, the movie, uh, you, you may have heard the term, well, the term xenophobic, Senna.
Sure.
Is, is foreign. And, and so typically, if you follow the rules, you go to college, you get a good job, you marry, you know, you marry a good Greek woman. You make, you have babies and then you feed the babies.
And that's your main responsibilities in life.
You know, and, and so, that didn't quite go according to plan. But before I went back east, um, and, and, and got enrolled in this master's program, I actually worked, um, uh, in, in Fort Collins. I worked with people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. I was an independent living counselor. And that was part of my, um, awareness and regarding people with ADD.
Kind of data set.
And that was, that, that's been a, that's been a, a value, a passion of mine that, uh, you know, through my legislative career, uh, through the work that I've done, is, is how do we be more inclusive and people that are dealing with those kinds of cognitive disabilities?
Sure.
You know, how, how do we help them have meaningful lives and so forth? You know, what kinda support? So, that, I did that, went back east to start the master's program, taught in an inner-city school, Elizabeth, New Jersey, cause it was a clinical approach, spent time with my dad, connected with Beth, um, uh, and, uh, ultimately, much to my surprise, she actually.
She was game to marry you up and moved back to Colorado?
Yeah, and, and you know, oh boy, lots of stories. But even prior to that, if I had picked up on this, I was never really good. I, I don't know if we need to get into that, but, um, you know, true confessions. But the whole relationship thing was a little bit hard for me. I, I, to be honest. And, uh, I was.
Like, lack of confidence? Was it?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, well, I was scared to death, you know, until I was twenty-five.
But I mean, uh, I'm sorry, forgive me, I.
No, go ahead.
Well, just that, um, so it was a bit of a surprise that, you know, we, we, we courted. And, and actually, I like to say, it was, um, so many stories. It was a package deal. Because like me, um, and had I picked up on this prior, she might've come out to Colorado when, when I first went out there. She wound up, Beth wound up going to Alaska. Uh, and, um, uh, she was there with, and eventually she met someone who was a Vietnam, um, war veteran and who was not well. Uh, but together, they had a child. And Harlan is, uh, when, we have two sons and he's technically my stepson.
Sure.
Uh, but he, I, you know, we raised him. And, um, so, so when, when Beth and I were hooking up in New York there and, um, she had Harlan, he was like a year old or less.
Yeah, yeah.
She had to leave because there was a lot of domestic violence and things of that nature. So, it was a package deal. She's, I actually had the courage to, uh, pro-, propose to her. And, um, uh, we did it on a fire escape. Do you know what a fire escape is?
Uh, well, I like ladders that go out the side of a building, but I don't know what a fire escape is in the context you're saying here.
Well, no, it, it's, it's that. But I mean, it's, it's, you know, in, in places like New York apartment buildings, you have fire escapes.
Sure.
Go out, you watch the movies. You, you said you're a Netflix kind of a guy.
Yeah.
So, anyway, that's where we did it.
Yeah, the cops chase the criminals, up and down the fire escapes and that kinda thing.
Exactly, exactly, Kurt. Uh, so, it, it was a bit of a surprise and it, and it felt good, you know, to be affirmed. But she said yes. We got married. And then, um, you know, we came back together, three of us, uh, in, in a small U-Haul. And, you know, we set up shop here and, and.
Didn't have the MGB anymore?
No, uh, although I have fond memories of, uh, you know, those four-cylinder engines. You can just pull them, you can just pull them right out. And I remember we used to do work in the backyard and, and you didn't have a winch. So, we just kinda had a chain going over a tree.
Right.
And you pull the engine out and you try to change the cylinder.
Put some new rings in there or whatever. They were air-cooled or no? They were liquid cooled?
Liquid cooled. And, and I think it sounds like you know a little bit about British cars, but they had the Lucas electrical systems.
Yes.
And they were not known to be a hundred percent reliable.
They, they talk about the, uh, Bosch electrical systems on the old BMWs and the makers of the world's first intermittent headlight switch. Instead of a wiper switch.
Well, anyhow, I guess we should, I mean.
We should, we should fast forward a little bit, otherwise we'll be here for three hours.
I, I, just that, um, so, you know, basically got my masters and I was, so I've, I've also worked as a teacher.
I mean, that was eighteen months or something like that, or, or two years. And, and you really connected with your dad, obviously, at a different level. You found Beth and, and her son and made them part of your family.
Yes.
And, uh, moved them back out to be part of the world out west, no?
Yes. And so, my activism, I mean, at that point, um, nineteen eighty-two, I suppose, my father died June fifth, nineteen eighty-two. You know, I c-, came back to, uh, to Colorado and, uh, started working as a teacher. I actually taught eighth grade science at, uh, Bill Reed.
Cool.
Back then, it was Bill Reed Junior High School. And, and, but I was also very, I was, I guess how you, the label is activist. And I was really focused on, uh, international matters, peace and justice things. And, and so, that kind of informed, you know, the, the volunteerism and the activism. And eventually, that, you know, the work that I did, I mean, it was everything from being a school teacher, mostly substitute teacher. Um, and, and then I, you know, I, for example, I worked, I started getting into human services. I worked through seven years for the county, uh, as a, a job training counselor with that risk youth. I worked for Project Self-Sufficiency for three years.
Oh, you did?
As a, as a, yes.
I forgot it was even open that long, but Mary.
Mary Carha was the, was the director. I, I, I worked for Catholic charities for seven years. So, I was doing all that kinda nonprofit work, uh, focusing. I, I realized at some point that the international stuff is terribly important. And it helped inform some of the other experiences I had over time.
Sure.
Uh, I spent, you know, I, I'd gone a number of times as a part of a delegation, for example, to Chiapas, Mexico. I got hooked up with an organization that was, uh, building relationships and helping to build schools and clinics in Chiapas, Mexico.
Oh, yeah.
And that, back then.
The Rotary Club did something with that, with Tracy Mead and John Carroll and different things, where they took a bunch of Suburbans down there.
Yeah, yeah.
You might've been part about, part of that later or a legacy of that.
And, and in those days, you know, the, um, when, when Clinton was president, there was NAFTA. And, and there was, you, you probably are aware, since you are a student of history and so many other things, uh, the, the whole Zapataista thing. And, well, but, but there was, um, a, a lot of pushback because of NAFTA and how it was impacting, you know, indigenous communities there. And so, ultimately, I was able to go down and as part of this organization out of San Diego, Squelas Bara Chiapas, again, building relationships, supporting the work that they were doing. But it was always a very, um, tense time because the military was occupying many of the areas. And there was, there were some pretty scary moments.
Yeah, talk to me about what, I, I don't wanna go too long, but what was it about NAFTA that like was really impacting the indigenous peoples? I've, I've come back recently from, uh, Cancun where the, the Mayas are still, you know, there's some sense of almost second-class citizens for Mexico in that space, if, if you will.
Sure.
And, uh, but I don't know really the impact on a, on a national, on a federal level.
Sure, there were a lot of things. But I think the, the, the main thing is that the concerns were that the provisions of the North American Free Trade Agreement were such that, um, the, the traditional agricultural methods and the access to the, you know, the access to what was available. Cause a lot of it is tropical jungles. Uh, there, there were concerns that a lot of that would be.
Cut down all this jungle and make coffee plantations that.
Yeah, there were those kinds of issues. And, and again, it was kind of in violation of what, you know, they wanted to live the way they have lived historically.
They didn't, not only did they not really wanna be part of Mexico, they certainly didn't wanna be part of the greater world order or whatever.
And, and it, there was a.
Or not just Mexico, but Honduras.
Yeah, there was a Zapataista rebellion. And, and there was, um, there, there was a, uh, nineteen ninety-one perhaps. But ultimately, they, they created a whole movement and it's mostly been nonviolent, which has been, always been very important to me.
Yeah.
So, I guess what I'm trying to get at is that my focus was a lot on international peace and justice kinds of things. But in the meantime, I was starting to realize that, you know, what happens closer at home, like at the state level with the legislature, issues related to homelessness and housing, um, uh, economic development, how to, you know, how do folks can get the training and overcome the barriers, like especially single parents and so on and so forth, to get jobs and to lead meaningful lives. So, that's where I started to shift.
A lot of different threads, cause you're, got your time with Project Self-Sufficiency, with your developmentally disabled people and things like that. And you're like, oh, there's a lot of complex challenges to fix and we can't have eighty-seven bandages. We gotta have a little bit more thoughtfulness in what we do.
So, yes, and it's, it's a good way to frame it. Thank you. And, and, uh, I mean, ultimately, my, my focus shifted a bit. Still involved in these other kinds of things. I'm very grateful that I had the opportunity to go to places like Nicaragua. Like Nicaragua and, uh, I went back to El Salvador in, in, in nineteen eighty-seven and so on. Thank you, Kurt.
Almost tipped it over.
So, but realizing that issues closer to home in our community were really important. And that's where I, I got involved there. And it was, um, it was two thousand, the year two thousand, where for the first, for the first time, I started thinking, what about running for public office? Cause I hadn't, honestly, I really hadn't thought about that. And I gave it some thought for all the, the reasons. But I waited because, um, I just did.
Yeah.
And then I decided to run for office in, um, two thousand and four, uh, House District fifty-two back in the day.
Okay.
And I was unsuccessful. And that's, that's a bit of a story in itself. But, um, uh, so I lost that, the general election.
Yeah.
There was a primary, I won the primary by nine votes, uh, and, and so on.
Wow.
But anyway.
And let's actually, um, let's take a short break and then come back to the start of your political career.
Okay.
If that's okay?
Yeah, alright.
The Local Experience is sponsored by InMotion, providing next-day delivery for local businesses. If you need anything delivered in northern Colorado. If you need anything delivered in northern Colorado, InMotion's flat fee service is a great resource for your business. Delivering from the Wyoming border to Denver and anywhere in between, their clients range from small breweries to real estate companies. InMotion can deliver almost anything you can imagine. If this fits a need for your business, contact InMotion directly by emailing them at inmotiounoco@gmail.com. That's I-N-M-O-T-I-O-N-N-O-C-O at gmail.com. And mention you heard it on the Loco Experience. And so I want to go back to, you mentioned an employment services organization that you worked for, um, immediately before kind of getting into, into government role, but talk to me about, so you, you left kind of the nonprofit space a little, or left teaching to get into kind of various nonprofit space things?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I worked for various nonprofits over the years. I, um, was involved in efforts. For example, uh, you know, they talk about, you know, issues related to homelessness.
Sure.
We actually, um, worked with various, uh, partners to establish something called, uh, New Bridges, which was a, one of the first daytime homeless shelters back in the day. Uh, but, but ultimately, for various reasons, the best I could do with being a school teacher was as a substitute teacher. And, and, um, and I, I guess once again, to be honest and full disclosure, I think it's related to my activism and, and some of the things that I was involved in. And, and, and so the school district made a decision that, um, as far as I could go would be substitute teaching.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, um.
Yeah, there's, there's, uh, that no good deed goes unpunished a little bit and you were a little too visible for their tastes. And I remember when, when Facebook first started kind of being a thing and stuff, I was like a senior vice president at the bank and, and different things. And I just, I've always kind of said whatever I think and I just, just because I say something doesn't even mean I think it necessarily. Um, but my, one of my friends, well, John Shaw, you've known John forever probably, he's like, Kurt, does the bank care about all the things you say on your Facebook? I'm like, I don't know, I've never given it a thought. But it definitely could have impacted me in the same way.
And, and ultimately, so I think it was the summer of eighty-seven, I got a temporary job with the county, Laramo County back in the day. And I worked as a, I think it was called a community health outreach worker.
Okay.
And it was working with, um, uh, migrants who were working out in the fields, like the onion fields. And we were making sure that the kids had access to.
Yeah, check their eyes, check their ears.
Dental and all of that. So that was a pretty, that was another one of those darn life-changing experiences. And then ultimately that helped me to get a job with Laramo County. And that's where I worked as, um, uh, as a job training counselor and working mostly with at-risk youth. But, you know, back in those days, for example, we used to do a lot of on-the-job training experiences. And, and I'm really, you know, it's, it's always a, a great thing when those of us who have been around the block, you run into young people that you helped either through Project Self-Sufficiency or the job training. And like they're doing really well and they, you know, their kids have grown up and even if they were a single, single parent, they've overcome those barriers. So, working for the county, uh, working for Project Self-Sufficiency, eventually working for Catholic charities for, for seven years. And then ultimately, you know, starting to make the shift. I worked for a nonprofit group out of, out of Denver, uh, but ultimately making the shift to, you know, to run for public office.
Yeah, yeah. So talk to me about that first run. I had, uh, Tom Lucero on a few months ago. And he said, uh, you know, one thing is, you've heard it even maybe on the conversation, if you, either, one of the three things is going to falter, your business, your personal life, he was talking about getting divorced actually his first time, or your political role. And I, and I basically responded, you know, well, I'm not really willing for my business or my family to suffer. And so can I just be a half-assed public servant? Is that better than not at all? Um, but for me, it was actually the statement that said, maybe it's time to wait, you know, because I've thought about that. But I don't really want to do one of those three things poorly. Did you feel that same thing?
Yeah, I, yes. And, and I think oftentimes people still come to me for advice about running for public office. And one of the first things I, I say to them is if you have, uh, young children, you really need to give it a lot of thought. Because running for office and then serving, especially at the state legislature, which technically you're supposed to be part-time citizen legislators. It can be very, um, demanding, you know, on your family life, on your children.
Yeah, it doesn't pay that much either.
And back, back then, the base pay, when I was in the legislature, it's gone up a bit. It was thirty grand a year.
Yeah.
And then you would get per diem and all of that. So.
And how old were your kids when you?
Well, they were, they were, so my, my older son, this, you know, my son Harlan.
Yeah.
He was born in eighty and so he would have been, um, teenager.
Yeah.
And, and Tim, our, uh, who works at CSU, uh, who was a big, that's another story is, uh, he's a big Ultimate Frisbee guy, if you know much about Ultimate.
I've played a few times.
Well, he, he's, uh, he's somewhat, um, what's the word?
Near famous?
Near famous, actually. Uh, but if we have time, we can get into that.
Fair enough.
But you'll have to invite me back, a sequ- a sequel or something.
Well, we'll have a fa- family segment later here. And so you can talk about the Ultimate Frisbee then.
That's very cool. Um, in any event, so, yeah, I, I think, um, I made that decision. I, I waited, I delayed because in two thousand, uh, for that particular House District fifty-two seat, there was somebody on, on the Democratic side who was running and I didn't feel like I needed to, you know, compete for that.
Yeah.
And that person actually was successful. This would have been two thousand to two thousand and two. And then in two thousand and two, that person, he only served one term.
Chose not to do it anymore?
Well, no, he got beat, he got beat.
Okay.
And then the person who beat him is the person, uh, who I ran against.
That you beat two years later.
Well, it was actually, so in, in oh-four, uh, I announced to run and, um, and then part ways through that. I don't know if you remember back in the day, uh, the mayor, the city of Fort Collins Mayor for ten, Bill Burci. Uh, he used to run the CSU mountain campus, the, uh, uh, up there.
Okay.
Pingree Park.
I moved away from like oh-two to oh, uh, seven effectively.
Yeah, so he, um, I announced to run and it under, you know, began the campaign. And then in April, he announced that he would be running. So we had a primary.
Oh.
And back then the primary election was in August.
Okay.
And at the end of the day, um, I was, uh, I was ahead by I think seven votes. And because of that, it kicked it into a recount. And so it took three weeks to kind of tally things up and we lost some momentum. Ultimately, I prevailed. And then in the general election, you know, we lost by a couple of hundred votes.
Oh.
But my, I don't even use the word opponent anymore. My, my, um, competitor, uh, is Bob McCluskey and you may know Bob.
I do know Bob.
And, and actually I think the world of him. I, you know, we always had a good relationship. We always were very civil and respectful with each other with regard to campaigns.
Wasn't he involved with the Liberty Common School or something like that too?
You might be.
Or there's a different Bob.
Bob Schaefer.
Bob Schaefer, yeah.
And that's it, that's another interesting story. There are lots of interesting stories that I, the ones that I can remember. But again, Kurt, long story short, um, we lost in the oh-four election. Then I went back and ran again and that would have been in oh-six and I was successful.
Okay.
So Bob and I sort of had a two out of three match and I won, set two out of three and then kind of kept going from there.
So, um, so that's the House of Representatives.
Yes.
And can you give a quick, like two minutes on what that job looks like in comparison? You've kind of talked about what a county commissioner does and whatever. Um, what's the representative? And then later you became a senator. So let's talk about both of those things now, like what, what's the difference a little bit?
Well, one difference of course is that in the Colorado State Legislature, it's in the constitution, but we have one hundred state legislators.
Okay.
You have sixty-five state reps and, and then you have thirty-five state senators.
Oh.
And even though the population of the Colorado changes, uh, you, you can't change the number of legislators unless it goes to a vote of the people. Because it's in the constitution.
Okay.
I don't know if a lot of folks know that.
So our voice just gets more and more diluted every year, basically.
But then that's part of why every ten years they do the redistricting.
Right.
And, and ideally a state rep should be representing about ninety thousand folks and about double that for a state senator.
Sure, okay.
So that, that's one difference. But I mean, ultimately, House District fifty-two back then was mostly, um, the east side of Fort Collins, the north side, kind of where we live in the Martinez Park neighborhood.
Yep, yep.
And, and, um.
Oh, we're neighbors.
Yeah, it's, it's a good neighbor.
Yep.
And that's another thing we could have a conversation about. We bought our house on Sycamore Street in nineteen eighty-eight. And, um, you know, for a price that's a lot.
Thirty-four thousand or something.
You're good. Um, forty-seven.
Fair.
And, and, uh, the, the property taxes I just paid were not on forty-seven.
No, no. Well, we bought our house on La Porte in Whitcomb, um.
No kidding, on La Porte and Whitcomb?
Two thousand and nine.
Interesting.
Yeah, um, and, uh, for two fifty-two, I think. And I don't know what it's worth, but it's more than that.
Well, we're at four twenty-eight, as, as.
That sounds fine.
According to the assessor. But all that said, um, uh, yeah, I, the, the, being a state representative, you know, you're in the legislative branch to do policy, uh, you, you, you try to engage the, 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 the community. I mean, that's always been a, a really important thing to me. I, I believe I had a hand in starting this whole idea of, um, uh, what we call community conversations or listening sessions.
Mm-hmm.
And that was, I always felt that being an elected official, even though you don't get paid much and all of that, you're a part-time citizen legislator, but part of the job description is you gotta be out there in the community.
Yeah.
And so we would, you know, we would create these opportunities for folks to ask questions, to push back, to, you know, give ideas on legislation.
Yeah.
So you, you, you try to, you know, and, and I've actually taught at CSU. I don't know if you knew that as well.
I didn't know. Well, that was my next question, actually. I was going to say you were a part-time citizen legislator. And so what did you do with your other part-time?
Well.
Little side hustles at CSU and things, I guess.
Just, um, I, I think, um, you know, my wife was working, she worked at a, as a, uh, music, um, uh, a worship assistant at Redeemer Lutheran.
Oh, is that right?
For, um, uh, nineteen years.
Oh, wow.
And so there was income coming there. There was, you know, I was very frugal. But ultimately I didn't really have other jobs, other than in the Senate, I was asked by the School of Social Work at CSU if I would teach a graduate course on public policy. And, and that was not because I had a, um, a bachelor of social work or a master's of social work. It was because I had, you know, direct experience.
Twenty years of advocacy and engagement in various ways.
So I had that and I think that was, that was a really good gig and I really enjoyed teaching a lot. But I guess, um, uh, to bring it all back, uh, that's what you do in the legislature. You, you try to identify, and this is what I would do with my, my students, you know, what is the problem you're trying to solve? Uh, is there a role for government? What's the cost to the taxpayer? I mean, there are some key questions you gotta ask.
Yeah, what are those unintended consequences?
What are those unintended consequences? You know, the pros and cons to it, the winners and losers? How do you bring home, uh, you know, I'm very passionate about this stuff to do it right and it's not easy. Bringing, bringing forth stakeholders and, and making sure that if, you know, and we, we've been up against, you know, like David and Goliath kind of thing. But ultimately, if you do the process right, you can come up with good policy that does identify the role of government in trying to solve problems. But of course, it's not always up to government, uh, you know, to, to solve problems. It's really up to the community. And government, in my opinion, has a role. So you, you, um, you get that input, you work with people. You ultimately, you know, have legislation or bills and you pass laws that hopefully address real community needs.
There's a really, um, fascinating podcast conversation I just listened to. I don't know, have you ever listened to the Lex Friedman podcast by chance? He just had on, um, and I listened to it yesterday and today, um, Tim Urban is the guy's name. And Tim's book is, um, I'm just looking it up on my little app here, uh, What's Our Problem?, A Self-Help Book for Societies. And one of the, one of the big things he shared, I guess almost the base premise, if I had to say it, is that we spend too much time focusing on the horizontal issues, like here, here's what I think about abortion. And if you don't agree with that, you're stupid. Here's what I think about gun control. And if you don't believe that, you're stupid. Instead of looking at the, the ladder, the height of the conversation, like we spend a ton of time on social media and otherwise in our reptile brain and not thinking with our full intellectual curiosity and being, uh, in communion together and, and benefiting from that collaborative solution thing that allowed us to create culture. And, and instead to go up the ladder. And I was just talking to my team about the fact that what we do at Loco Think Tank is basically creating spaces to go up the ladder of.
That's great.
Communication and, and understanding.
And it's interesting, Kurt, this is all very interesting, actually. Just last Wednesday, I attended the, uh, community meeting at the, at the library, you know, Old Town Library that was put on.
Oh, the Braver Angels event?
Well, they, yeah, they, they highlighted the Braver Angels, but I, I think the title of the event was A Crossing Political Divides. And that's an example of a goal that I've set for myself this year as a county commissioner is how do we, you know, what can we do tangibly to try to rebuild some of the trust?
Yeah.
You know, certainly COVID, COVID and all, and the pandemic didn't help any of that.
True.
That's a whole nother conversation. Uh, but it was a really, really excellent, um, presentation. The, the, uh, community room was packed and, and they had, um, uh, you know, Martine Karkason was there from the Senate for Public Deliberation. And then I didn't even know that, that it existed, but there's something called the Northern Colorado Deliberative Journalism Project. So I thought that was really great. And they talked about the Braver Angels and, uh, other best practices, uh, resources that are out there. They highlighted this one person from a TED, a TED Talk. It was all very fascinating.
Yeah.
And that's important to me.
Thank you. Yeah, uh, I, I agree fully. And so, um, I think that's, uh, one of the, I'm a, I, I don't know, you probably don't read my blog, but I'm kind of a diehard, small government libertarian type of fellow. And so some might think that we have a lot of strife, but I'm also a communitarian. I want the best for people. And we, in some places have different ideas about how to accomplish that. But starting with knowing that we each want the best for people is a good place to start from.
Well, and, and, and perhaps, um, that's a good segue into, you know, as I've been, I've been doing this for a while. Not that I know everything about it, but one of the things that I've really learned, and I try to put it into practice, I'm not always successful. Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
But, you know, I, I often say to folks, you know, God gave us two ears and one mouth. Uh, we should listen twice as much as we speak. And I, and I find, I tried to put that in, in, into practice. But I also, you know, one of the experiences that I had, Kurt, was in two thousand and two, I actually went to Israel and Palestine. And, and it was part of a delegation. There's something called the Compassionate Listening Project. And it focuses on, you know, you go through a training, you know, listening from the heart, setting aside your biases. And when you're sitting down with somebody who you may not agree with, not necessarily trying to jump in and say, well, how am I, how am I going to change this person's mind? How do we look at it collaboratively? How do we go up, you know, up, upstream, up, you know, vertically rather than horizontally? And, and I've tried to put that into practice, that if I'm sitting down, I think it's important to be able to sit down with folks who, who you may not agree with. And it's not so much about, I hope this makes sense, it's not so much about trying to change their mind about something. But it is, in my opinion, it is about better understanding where they're coming from.
Totally.
And, and a lot of times if people have opinions that maybe seem irrational or something, uh, they're, they're based out of fear, they're based out of anger. And, and, and it, it applies to where, you know, whether you're on the left end of the political spectrum or the right end of the political spectrum or wherever libertarians fit into that.
Right.
Sorry. And, uh, and, um, but I just think it's, um, it's, it's just, you know, it's just really important.
Well, I've, I've kind of given up trying to change people's minds. Uh, only you can change your mind.
Yeah.
Is my notion. And only anybody else listening to this conversation, that you can only change your own mind. You can only make yourself act. You can only be responsible for your own financial and educational successes. And some people can walk alongside you and help you understand better and questions can help too.
And I think part of that conversation is, I mean, the best way that we can influence others perhaps is, is by example, right?
Yeah.
You know, by example, live, live the, you know, be a good role model, especially for the children. And ultimately, um, you know, some of that, you know, spills over with other folks. And, and I think we have to be willing to accept and embrace that other people might have some valid viewpoints.
Yeah, yeah.
And they might have some answers that you hadn't thought of to a very complex problem.
Yeah, no, I think that's true. And, and understanding that we all have different perspectives and bits of information to add into the sauce of, of greater understanding, uh, is pretty clutch. So how, how does that play out in like things like your legislative experience and the, the Senate and the representatives? Or is there a lot of, is there time for that? Is there space for that? Or is it more like the bully pulpit and the cultures of who can build the coalitions of the, the moneyed elite?
Well, I would say that there, it's not easy, but there is time for that and it's really important. And I know that one of my, my things when I was in the legislature, both in the House and the Senate, was this whole, um, I would try to get every year at the beginning of the session, uh, to pass a resolution around stability.
Hmm, yeah.
And, and, you know. So, so that's, that's important. And I, again, I think if you want to be a good legislator, if you want to be someone who is a public servant, who tries to be authentic and does a good job of listening, you have to be willing to sit down with, you know, who are the stakeholders? What is the issue you're trying to address? And bring folks in who, you know, may push back. But in the end, I think you can come up with much better policy when you engage in that kind of process. And it's not easy and it typically takes longer, yes.
Yeah, fair enough. Um, what else would you have people know about what being a public servant is like? It feels like, you know, maybe there's some people out there thinking about it themselves. You mentioned already, you know, if you've got little kids, maybe think twice or whatever. But, yeah, describe like the, the, the space of living that life that you've lived the last twenty years.
Yes, um, it's an interesting space. And I suppose if you talk to my spouse, you might get, you know, and that's.
I'm sure she's proud of you. I have no question about that.
She is, but you know, it's, it's not a but, it's an and. Um, it's not been without sacrifice. And you know, most, when I've been. And you know, most, when I've been doing this, our kids have been mostly grown up. But I realized that for the last twenty years, I've worked most of the time. And, and, and so I think I've lost some things. And now as I get older, and especially having a five-year-old granddaughter that I brag about all the time, who is brilliant, you should get her on your show someday, although she's very, she's, she's, she's brilliant. I mean, it would knock your socks off. And, uh, but she's very shy. She's very shy. Uh, so, so it's not been an easy twenty years. And, um, I'm realizing, especially as I get older, cause we're on this, you know, we're on this, we're in this, in this life for a temporary amount of time. I, I, I wanna reconnect with my family, with my friends, you know, those kinds of things.
Well, I'm thinking about that early lust for travel and adventure and backpacking and the boonies and stuff. I mean, you've sacrificed quite a bit of that stuff too, probably because of the, just the busyness of your commitments here.
That is correct. And so, um, I mean, to your question, I think that, you know, as a public servant, as an elected person, as a county commissioner, uh, it is very, it can be very rewarding. But I would be somewhat disingenuous if I didn't say there weren't times when it was, it can be very stressful. And, and, um, you know, I, I mean, I, as a county commissioner especially, I think in a lot of ways it's harder cause you're dealing with everything, from potholes, uh, from potholes to trying to figure out how we're gonna address the lack of affordable housing
Right.
Uh, in, in this, you know, in our community. And, and so it, it, it's rewarding, especially when you make connections with folks. Um, and, but it can also be, it can also be very challenging, cause the issues that we deal with, whether they're oil and gas development, whether they're, um, trying to update our regulations, another hot topic right now, you never would have thought. It's right up there with oil and gas and climate change and everything else, is short-term rentals.
Right, right. It's a big deal. It makes a big difference.
It's a big deal and it makes a big difference. So, one thing I tell folks, a, and, and I'll pause after this, and that is, if, if you're gonna run for office, you gotta really think about why you wanna, why you, why you're doing that. What are your intentions? How does that affect your family and your friends? How does that affect work-life balance? But I think ultimately, people have to be authentic. People have to be genuine. I, I think, especially in Lammer County, folks get it. They don't want someone who just does stump speeches. Uh, and, and so I think it's really important that you are and present yourself as someone who's genuine, who's a regular person, who happens to be doing this job as well.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I think we're still, while we're still in your career, you just faced a, a very challenging opponent for the county commissioner spot in Justin Smith, uh, last fall. You, you eked out a, actually a, a pretty substantial victory, you know, I don't know what, a couple thousand votes or something?
Actually, something like nineteen thousand, but who's counting?
Yeah.
Uh, it was, I believe it was like ten percentage points.
Yeah.
Almost ten.
Yeah, bigger than, bigger than I guessed it, honestly. Not because I don't like Justin or don't like you or whatever. I was just kinda, what do you think the difference was in, in that race with such a frankly high name recognition candidate, uh, in our region?
Darn good question. First, let me share, you know, the, the, the common ground that we were both operating off of. So I announced, I think back in December of last year, that I was running for, I would run for reelection. And then in early January, uh, a couple of days before Justin Smith announced that he would be running for the, the county commissioner seat, he actually called me as a courtesy to let, let me know that. And I thought that was very, um, very courteous, very gracious and all of that. And I said, that's great, Justin. Uh, the only thing I would ask, and we had a gentleman's agreement, a verbal agreement, is let's stick to the high road. Let's not go down the road of, uh, you know.
Name-calling or different things.
All of, all of those kinds of things. And, and that's how the campaign was, um, was undertaken. And I, and I think that's what people would expect. Those are the expectations that the voters of Lammer County have. And I think the voters of this country have, and we don't always deliver, uh, the way, the way we ought to.
Yeah, fair.
But that's how I've always tried to do it. And, and both Justin and I work from that space. And I think what, you know, what contributed to our success is, you know, we've had experience running successful campaigns. I realized that as a county commissioner, honestly, uh, Kurt, it, it can be a twenty-four-seven job.
Right.
And, and so what I've done in the past with campaigning and being out knocking on doors and canvassing, which are really important, especially since COVID has kinda subsided.
Yeah.
I wasn't able to do that. So, and, and even the, the, I'm not the typical person, you know, you always get all these requests for money. And I know money is a part of it, but actually, we raised half the amount of money as we did the previous campaign and we had the same kind of outcome. And I, I guess I attribute that, that to maybe two things. One is, there is a bit of a track record here. I mean, I've been doing this for a while. I, I have, just like Justin, former sheriff, have name recognition.
Yep.
And, and I think one of the things that I, I believe is real, is that a lot of folks, um, who may not agree with me, respect me.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
And we have those relationships.
I think you're, like, even with those of us and the community that disagree with you, they would say, you know, John Kafalas, he's authentic. He has integrity. You know, I don't know how he comes to those conclusions on some things, even when they disagree, right? But that I trust him to do what he thinks is the right thing to do. Um, whereas too many people are swayed by, uh, the, you know, whatever, the opportunities later or things like that. I mean, yeah, we'll talk more about politics specifically later, but.
And, and I don't have a whole lot of political aspirations. I've always viewed this as a way of doing public service.
Yeah.
Um, and trying to bring folks together. And, you know, one of the things that might cause you to chuckle or smile is I remember running not for the commissioner thing, but prior, I can't remember.
One of the set of races.
One of those darn races. But I remember tw- in two yards, I saw, well, it had to be when John McCain and Sarah Palin were running for, uh,
Okay, yeah.
Would that have been oh-eight perhaps?
I suppose, yeah, or maybe, maybe twelve?
Maybe twelve. Anyway, the, the.
In Obama's second term? I don't know.
The funny thing is that, um, there were two front yards where there was a, um, a yard sign for John McCain and Sarah Palin and Kafalas.
Right, yeah.
Go figure.
That's, uh, that's pretty significant. That should be on the front page of your Facebook site.
Well, and I've had a, you know, over time, anecdotally, quite a number of folks have said, you know, I, they're in the other political party and they said, you're the first person of your political, political party that I voted for.
Hmm, interesting. Yeah, I think that's probably reasonable.
Anyhow.
Yeah. What's next for you? Are you gonna keep that county commissioner role for a while? You got a lot of juice in your, in your fire, it still seems like. But I realized today that you're quite a bit older than I expected to find.
You know that, how old I am?
I, you know, you must be at least twenty years older than me and I'm forty-eight, so sixty-eight is that? Maybe you're seventy?
No, no, sixty-eight. Let's leave it at that.
Okay, somewhere right up there.
No, I was born in nineteen fifty-four, you were born in seventy-four.
Yeah, there we are.
Oh, gosh. Um, so I just got reelected. I'm a month and a half into my second term, so that's where my focus is right now.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's, you know, there's a lot of work before us.
Is there term limits on county commissioners?
Yes, the, the short answer is yes. And there are three, three terms, three four-year terms.
Oh.
So I, I, I would have the option of running for a third term.
Yeah.
Uh, in, I guess in twenty twenty-six. But right now, I'm really focused on continuing to do the job. I, I like to say, keep my nose to the grindstone. Um, a lot of critical issues before us.
Yeah. What, what are those maybe top three critical issues for Lammer County? I think you probably mentioned some of it on the affordable housing and, and workforce. Is that two of them?
Well, you know.
Infrastructure's gotta be a big one too.
All of those things. I, I guess what, when you ask that question, certainly on the workforce side of things and the economic development side of things, a lot of credit should go to, um, Lammer County and, well, the Fort Collins Chamber of Commerce, all of the various business groups.
Loco Think Tank.
Well, and Loco Think Tank. Yes, absolutely, because, and the, um, the Weld County Employment Services. Clearly, that's where we've come together for a regional approach.
Yeah.
To dealing with, uh, economic development and.
Yep, yep, for sure.
Uh, uh, workforce. So I think that's an example of, of, of people coming together and, and, and dealing, you know, addressing the issues. Other things that are front and center, I would offer, Kurt, you know, the, um, the solid waste issue. So you're probably, you've read in the paper that recently the county agreed to go into negotiations with Republic Services, do a public-private partnership.
Yeah.
Uh, regarding the, the construction and the operation of the new landfill that will go, um, seven miles north of, um, Wellington on County Road Nine up towards Rawhide.
Okay.
And I can, I can talk about.
I haven't read about that yet, but significant.
So.
Well, and is Republic, is, are they now a, a city-sponsored monopoly as well? And, and what about Ram Waste? What happened there?
So there were two questions there. Um, they're, technically, they're not, uh, yet a, um, a city-sponsored monopoly. There was a, something in the paper where, I think it was first reading with city council, or at least, uh, regarding, um, they, they put out an RFP, just like we put out an RFP for the, uh, for the landfill, the transfer station.
Right.
And there, and then expanded recycling center. Um, but they put out an RFP, the preferred vendor was, um, was Republic Services. And so, assuming that it goes through the various readings and however.
Many steps, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's, um, they will be the, um, the, 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 the single hauler. People will have options and that's more on the residential side, which I think represents twenty percent of the, the garbage that, uh, comes out of Fort Collins. But both the city of Fort Collins and county were very committed to diversion. And so, for example, in the MOU that we established with Republic Services, we wanna get to fifty percent diversion, uh, by twenty thirty, for example. And of course, the city is, uh, you know, pushing for, and we agree for net zero waste or whatever.
Sure.
Is called. So, so they are not quite there yet, but assuming if the city council approves the contract, well, approves moving forward with the contract, they still gotta work out the contract.
Yeah.
Just like we are in the process of negotiating a contract with Republic, uh, that's how that would, you know, go down. Your other question had to do with Ram Waste. Um, what, what's interesting, I think it's interesting, and this is a big issue. We gotta deal with the solid waste issue and the recycling issue. And that is that, um, you know, it used to be Gallegos. They were a family-owned business. They, they were the main thing in town. Um, and then, and then of cour- of course Loveland has their own trash hauling service. And they bring their recycling and their trash up to the landfill, up, you know, over there on Taft Hill. But otherwise, it's commercial haulers, you know, the private sector. So Gallegos sold to Republic.
Yep.
Ram Waste, actually, there's another national company called Waste Connections.
Okay.
They bought out Ram Waste.
Oh, really?
And then, of course, we have Waste Management, which is the third.
Oh, right.
National company, and they've been operating and they have.
When they've got control over the, at least one of the dumps too, kinda, right? Or something? Or they had some involvement in funding of the other dump, maybe?
They have, uh, they have their own dump, as you put it.
East facility over.
Yeah, on, on Highway, uh, fourteen, towards Alt. So that is their, their privately owned, uh, landfill. So there's the one that the county is running, that's gonna close up in, uh, by twenty twenty-four. And that's why there's some urgency in building this new landfill and this transfer station and, and on and on.
Well, and Waste Management is like, well, you're filling up, we have the only place to haul stuff right now. There's an interesting, some leverage stuff going on there, I mentioned too.
Yeah, but the goal, of course, is ultimately to try to, um, minimize as much as we can what goes into the dump.
Yeah.
And, and look at markets and, and, you know.
Well, maximize efficiencies, minimize waste, all those things. Why do we burn trash?
Why do we, or why don't we?
It seems like, I mean, especially if you're thinking about like Europe, they started burning wood and coal and a bunch of stuff this year cause of shortage of energy and.
Well.
I don't see the solar and wind thing really capturing a lot more market share unless there's significant battery or efficient storage. And so right now, we're kinda stuck between a rock and a hard place and we got dumps filling up all over the country.
Well, I would say that, uh, why we.
Big question.
Well, why we don't burn, um, garbage is, and unless it's done properly, there, you know, there can be significant issues with emissions. And I, you know, it's interesting you mention that, cause when I grew up in New York, you know, we used to have, you know, the, the, the city, the city of New York has their sanitation department and they would incinerate a lot of the trash. Yeah. Uh, and, 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 but there are new technologies that look at, um, pyrolysis and those kinds of things. So there might be some opportunities there, but, but historically, we've not burned garbage because it puts up too much pollution.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. So that, that's the reason there. And as far as the, the landfill that's out on Taft Hill, I mean, part of how we, how we've, um, extended the life of the landfill is, you know, we've looked at, uh, different practices around compaction. You know, the equipment that we have out there. And I don't know if you ever thought of this, but, um, remember when we had that mega hailstorm a couple of years ago?
Sure.
And everybody had to replace their roofs?
Right.
Well, that took off about three months from the landfill because of all those shingles.
Right.
We didn't have the proper way to recycle or reuse those shingles.
Right, and those shingles are huge, high-density sources of energy in a way, because it's basically oil. You know, packed in with a little bit of rock for protecting the, the car.
So to your question a few minutes ago, you know, the, the dealing with the solid waste issue is, is a front and center issue.
Yeah, seems like it.
And, and, um, you know, for example, I'll be up in Wellington, I, I do these community conversations. I do like three or four a month, Laporte, Red Feather, Wellington, et cetera. Um, and we'll be up there on March second. And we will be talking, providing an update on the landfill stuff, but also Republic Services has gotten, uh, it's interesting that people in Wellington are not happy with the customer service.
Well, I was just thinking, uh, NIMBY is likely the case too. Well, it's not just the customer service, but they also don't want a bunch of trucks going up and down their county road up there, right?
The, the trucks are, and we've had those conversations and that's part of the intergovernmental agreements. And that's part of the agreement, ultimately, the contract with, um, uh, with Republic is they're not gonna, they, they're not gonna go up and down the county roads.
Oh, good.
So there is a, there is a preferred route and that route will be from the transfer station, that's gonna be where the current site is. Ultimately, those trucks that are gonna bring it up to the landfill are gonna go out to I twenty-five and go up and then come in on Al Canyon.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, yeah.
And so, so that's a bit really in, in front and center issue. Another one that comes to mind that I think, uh, there's less, um, contentiousness perhaps. And that is, uh, behavioral health. So you know, the voters passed the sales tax initiative, the county sales taxing in twenty eighteen.
Support, kinda.
Yeah, and so, um, this fall, we're, we're gonna complete the construction of the behavioral health facility right there on, on.
Good thing, cause people have been getting crazier faster than ever the last couple of years, uh, as well.
Well, and this is dealing with mental health issues and it's also dealing with substance use disorder. So we'll have the.
Yeah, both of those things.
We'll have the facility, uh, and it'll provide some crisis, it'll actually have a detox center, for example.
Oh, yeah.
Never had that before.
Hauling people to Greeley for detox for twenty years or something.
Exactly.
So, um, I would love to spend another hour just talking about regional issues and stuff. And we can have a coffee or something later, uh, and do that.
I would like that.
I wanna make sure we get into the, the Faith Family Politics segments here. And, uh, you can start wherever you wish. I wanna make sure that we have a chance to talk about Ultimate Frisbee and, uh, your family development. So if you'd like, maybe we, I'd invite you to start there. Um, so what, what was your older son's name, your stepson?
So our, our, uh, my older son, our older son, excuse me, is Harlan.
Harlan, yeah.
And he, um, uh, interesting, he graduated from Pooter High School, uh, in the first, uh, international baccalaureate class back in ninety, ninety-eight. And he went to CU, uh, was not happy there. And ultimately, um, much to our surprise, in nineteen ninety-nine, called us up one day and said, uh, Dad, I think you need to sit down. I gotta tell you something. Cause he was down in Lewisville living, cause he was at CU.
Yeah.
Said, I'm joining the army.
Oh, wow.
So he served in the army for twenty-two years, retired in twenty twenty-one.
Wow.
Um, and he has three kids.
Okay.
Um, and right now, they're living in Missouri and there's a bit of a story to that. So that's, um, Harlan is our ol- older son. And, 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 uh, the woman he married, Tracy, he actually met, she was a navigator on a merchant marine vessel.
Oh, cool.
Uh, when the Iraq war started in two thousand and three.
Wow.
He was in charge of security. The Marines were already deployed and normally they would be protected. The, the, the ship was, um, bringing heavy equipment and things like that over there to Ba- Basra, I think it was. And so he was in charge of that. And that's how he met Tracy. And, um, I, I believe they went from playing canasta to, you know, how things happen sometimes.
Uh, horizontal canasta, I think they call that other one. Um, sorry. Uh, anyway, so one of the things we do, and if you're not an avid listener, you would know, but we, I do, uh, one-word descriptions of either the kids or the grandkids. In this case, I know that there's at least three grandkids there.
Four.
Uh, four now. Would you like to, um, name them each and give an age and then give a one-word description attempt without, uh?
Sure. So my, my son Harlan and his, and his spouse Tracy, they have three kids.
Okay.
Uh, the oldest is, uh, nineteen, uh, Toby, Tobias.
Okay.
Uh, then the next one is Barbara and she, um, I guess this July she'll be seventeen. And then the youngest is John, and they named him after me. His name is John Michael Kafalas.
Nice.
And what's really interesting and maybe a little bit bizarre is I was born the day after Christmas.
Oh.
He was born the day after Christmas.
How cool is that?
So they have three kids. Uh, and then our younger son, Tim.
Yep.
He works at CSU. And his spouse Shayna works at Partners Mentoring Youth.
Oh, great.
And they have a five-year-old going on six, um, uh, granddaughter, well, our granddaughter, Mila.
Mila.
And.
M.I.L.A.?
Yeah.
What a pretty name.
And she goes, she started full-day kindergarten in August and she, um, she's at Harris Bilingual.
Awesome.
Yeah.
That's really cool. So, um, let's, let's get those one-word descriptions. I'll let you go oldest to youngest with Tobias first.
So, one word, eh?
One word, like sometimes we allow hyphens.
If you allow hyphens, thank you, risk taker.
Ooh, sounds interesting. Tobias, you got a bright future ahead as long as you don't take too many risks. Um but I'm sorry, I can't read my own writing here, Barbara?
Barbara. Gosh.
We can cut out some of this dead space if we need to.
Oh, forgive me, I'll I will say learner.
Learner, I like that word. And then John.
Video games. I that's not exactly.
Yeah, close enough.
And then the other one, Mila.
Yeah.
Curious, I'll leave it at that, curious.
That'll that'll benefit her probably more than risk taking in some ways. Um let's hear a little bit more about Tim, um we we heard about Harlan and his military journey, Tim's at CSU now, but he had. Uh semi famous ultimate frisbee along the way and and what's he teaching or what's he doing?
He worked, so Tim graduated from CSU, I think in two, um excuse me, in two thousand and eight. And um he currently works in the um uh the the academic success, CSU academic success center. And and um he, when he was a student at CSU, he got into playing ultimate disc or ultimate frisbee. And then when he graduated for five years, he coached the CSU team, uh the Hibita team. And he is actually made a name for himself because he currently uh coaches, last year was the inaugural year. Of the semi professional team in Colorado called the um Colorado Summit.
Okay.
And he is one of the um three coaches for the Colorado Summit.
Oh, that's cool.
And then he coaches.
They travel around for huge weekend uh ultimate disc tournaments and whatever.
Well, and actually in their inaugural year, they their record, it was um like thirteen and one. And they actually made it to Madison, Wisconsin in the semifinals and they almost made it to the championship game. But then he coaches another team, it's it's called Johnny Bravo and it's in another um elite men's uh ultimate team. And they actually made national champions.
Wow, what a distinctive uh career journey, he might not be, no, no, don't tell CSU, but it wouldn't surprise me if his. Other opportunities outgrow his main hustle one of these days.
And I think he, you know, he's very um, hi- his work is is really meaningful and. And I know recently they were um successful in getting a, I think it's like a one and a half million dollar grant uh to uh promote um. Uh people of color diversity, people pursuing PhDs, for example. So that's that's an example of the kind of work. Yeah, they do a lot of great work and then his spouse Shayna, she works for Partners Mentoring Youth and and together they're just pretty amazing parents.
Community citizens for sure.
Yes.
Um let's talk about Beth a little bit. Uh it because her dad was a Lutheran pastor in your neighborhood nearly or not too far. Uh is that uh what what's her family's ethnic heritage, are they?
German, um I think there's a, you know, a number of things in there.
European mix, northern European mix, I think is what a lot of us are in North Dakota too.
Yeah, yes.
And uh so what was it, like you told me that you were a little bit awkward and things, what was it? Maybe about you that that really drew her to you when you reconnected?
Well, we had, we had known each other before, um she often talks about how. During the Vietnam War, there was um uh a a march uh and and I was in high school at the time. And she comments that she saw me from a distance, kind of singing out, singing my lungs out, singing out my my heart and. And then we did meet a little bit prior and um but I just didn't pick up on the on the on the connections there.
Well, that was something that in inspired her, at least impressed her, that you had, I guess, the boldness to go be part of that.
Yes.
And and speak your mind.
Yeah, and and I think um ultimately, we knew each other, um you know, we we started seeing each other when I went back east and. And um I I just think things uh, you know, there was a, there was a synergy there and and ultimately, and we've been married forty one years.
Congratulations.
In November twenty first and as you know, in relationships, they're not always a cakewalk. And and there have been a few ups and downs, but I mean, overall, we've done well and, you know, after about forty years, you're sort of on automatic.
You get pretty comfortable, yeah.
Automatic pilot, but she um she has a degree from CSU, uh music degree, she's she plays piano. Other kinds of instruments, uh and she worked at Redeemer Lutheran for nineteen years and retired. And now she is or was and now less so, but the the primary um childcare person for Mila. You know, ever since she was born. Beth has been the main person, you know, taking care of her and then as she got older. It was, you know, it was less days because she would go into a playgroup and now, of course, with um full day kindergarten, Beth picks her up. Three days a week from Harris. And then the folks, the parents pick her up the other two days.
I mean, what a blessing for her, what a blessing for Mila and what a blessing for for Mila's parents too, right? For Tim and and Shay- Shayna.
Absolutely, it's yes, and and uh you know, for for the longest time, I mean, Beth was um earning some income that way. But it was much less, as you can imagine, than if they were to have to go to.
Sure, well, daycare is, you know, twelve, fourteen hundred dollars a month, pretty much anymore, or fifteen hundred more.
Yep, yep, and that's another issue that we're, you know, where the county has a role, we're trying to, you know, help address that issue. But yes, so Beth has been the main caretaker for Mila for the last number of years. Uh she's um another, you know, really smart person and um she's put up with me for forty one years. And and she's been very um patient and tolerant because I, you know, I I I work a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
And 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 that gets old sometimes, to be honest and uh but, you know, recently, um you know, we we went out on a date like twice in one weekend. Which really is unheard of and in fact, to to tonight, we may go to that pizzeria that I was mentioning.
Oh, good.
To support our friend Mary.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's a good relationship, uh I like to travel, she doesn't like to travel as much, we kind of have to work through that. Back in the day, we used to do a lot of hiking and camping and backpacking, she does less of that, but we still, you know, one really exciting thing that's coming up. That um was uh my my birthday present for Mila and her folks was Family Trip three point oh. And I think you would appreciate this, but over spring break, my son has arranged everything, Tim. And we're gonna fly to um I think Santa Cruz and camp out for four nights in a a redwood park there, a county park that has. Um um coastal redwood trees and maybe even go to uh, what's that famous aquarium, Monterey Bay or something?
Yep, yep.
You know, do things like that, so I'm I'm really excited about that.
Yeah, fill in, check off some of those boxes and places to see that you sacrificed as as a public servant in the last twenty years and and a. Over full time job almost. Over full time, part time job. So I think that you've really shown a lot of love and appreciation for family through this conversation all along the way. And so a- a- anything you'd like to say about your your parents, I know your dad is dispatched, I assume your, maybe your mom is.
She's gone to. She um, well, I I appreciate that and and uh, you know, my my father was a great role model. And it it's weird when I think about him because he sacrificed a lot, he didn't have much of an education. He he worked his tail off in the diner, so you know, we could, we could have a some semblance of a comfortable life, we were never. You know, a regular middle class folks, maybe lower middle class, uh my mother was mostly um a housekeeper or a homemaker. Although she did work outside the the house, the home, especially in the years when my father uh was not able to do that. It was harder. A a a lot of um, you know, my my Greek heritage is is really important to me, the Greek traditions. Uh you know, one of the things you brought up was about faith and I I think it's important and appropriate to share that um. I I was baptized Greek Orthodox.
Yeah, I wanted to get into that a little bit here too, so let's just shift into the faith conversation. But then you married a a Lutheran girl.
Yeah, and and you know, we, our wedding was one of those eclectic weddings, it wasn't in a Greek Orthodox church. Uh but it all, and and my mother, you know, my father was in the hospital at the time, we didn't think enough to ask him to try to get him out, he was dealing with prostate cancer. And stuff like that, um but anyway, my mother actually did show up, although she was late, I think it was hard for her. Uh because it was in my, you know, I'm sorry, forgive me, it was in um.
Here, you need that whiskey in your hand too.
It was in uh in in Beth's dad's, the Bethlehem Lutheran Church, but it was, it was a great thing and and again, my father. I I I sometimes I I go to tears when I think of him because he worked so hard and he was a very giving person and I think he was a great role model. And I didn't see him much because he worked a lot of the times. And then my mother, you know, again, she she did the best she could to love us, she was actually um part of um. You know, when the Nazis occupied Greece, she was there as a teenager and it was really hard.
Oh, wow.
It was really, really hard, I mean, they had to hide in cemeteries, they didn't have much to eat and I think she comes, uh you, I think you can relate, Kirk. That the the that generation, the greatest generation, I mean, there were a lot of issues there that we haven't had to deal with. And so she.
She had carried some trauma from those times even in some ways.
Say yes, and I guess the thing, as much as I love my mom, it wasn't easy. Because even though I did well in school and all of that, it was never good enough.
Yeah.
And I think she imparted that on my my dad too, um and so that was a little bit hard. But over time, you know, she came to love Beth and Harlan and everything else. So I think that was really helpful and and we had a good relationship and then five years ago or so, she um she got sick and you know, she. You know, she eventually passed away, this was back in New York and I was glad because I was, it was Mother's Day. And uh I was um with Beth and we were at the Hilton here, you know, on on Prospect. And we were, we took a a friend of ours, Mary, who was um a a mom, a grandma. Uh we took her out, you know, for brunch, Mother's Day brunch and I remember getting a call and, you know, if you're from New York, they like to use four letter words. Quite a bit. And they said, you need to get here right away, um you know, mom's in the hospital and she's not doing well. So I got it, I got there the next morning, my sister flew in from Athens and ultimately, we got to spend the last forty eight hours. But in the end, um we had to make a decision about um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it goes.
Yeah.
Um so have you remained Greek Orthodox or do you go to the Lutheran Church and? Because I I I confess, actually, I have a little bit of knowledge about Greek Orthodoxy because I I met a former. Member of a church that I knew that that uh owns Jim Dunn in Loveland and he had switched from be like being like raised an evangelical. To the Greek Orthodox Church, uh and I've listened to the podcast from their church, the Saint Saint Spiegel's or Saint something in Loveland.
In it on Twenty Ninth Street, Saint Spiriton.
Yeah, Saint Spiriton, yeah, uh and so, but I've really enjoyed frankly, the, I guess, kind of part of the tradition. Like they kind of largely do services the same as they did two thousand years ago and followed a lot of the same protocol. And really the consistency, you know, and and really uh and and the perspective of God and how. How you can't really define uh that force as well as maybe we want to try to, we put, I would like to say, we put all of our. Various, you know, Baptists and event, you know, Methodist and stuff, we're putting God in little boxes and the Greeks kind of refuse to put God in a box in comparison.
That's that's interesting, all of what you've just said and uh so I was raised Greek Orthodox, it's still is important to me, I kind of stepped away from it. You know, part of it is, as you said, they do the um uh the liturgy and the service in in the ancient, the old Greek and. If you didn't know that, it was hard and, you know, how do you relate to that, so that was part of um. Uh you know, I would go to church when I was a kid because you had to go to church, uh but I, you know, I would also, I also went to Greek school like they. Uh you know, where I had to learn Greek um and all of that, but but my Christian faith has always been really important. And talk about journeys, so when I came back. When I came back from Peace Corps and I saw like Christian based communities and how people who were dealing with immense poverty and a lot of violence and all that. Were overcoming that, I mean, it was just an amazing thing, Kurt, I I realized that there's a lot of strength there and and so. I migrated to um some of the historic peace churches. And when I came back to Fort Collins, for a number of years, I attended the uh friends meeting here in town.
Okay.
And and um and then from there, I actually um attended the Mennonite Fellowship for. I I never, you know, sort of converted or whatever.
Yeah.
But I was a member.
Well, they're a consistent voice for peace and, you know, thinking about not just your mom, but also your wife's first. First hus- or whatever, first the the father of Harland, you know, people get wrecked by war and the deciders. About getting into war don't always seem to think about that consequence.
And once again, I appreciate your insights, um yeah, I. You know, the people who go off to war, the soldiers like my son or like uh all the sacrifices that families and soldiers are experiencing now. In Ukraine with the the war with Russia.
Sure.
That's real and that's that's something that we have to honor and and support. Uh it's oftentimes the politicians who make decisions about getting us into war. And I'm not sure if they've actually.
They don't face any consequences hardly.
Any consequence, I don't know how much they've thought through, what the implications are, so I've never been a big um. You know, I've always considered myself as a quote nonviolent activist, you know, there's a term of pacifist. And I still consider myself that, but I think one of the things that I've um, and even with my idealism, I I still consider myself an idealist. Which is very different and we can get into that if you'd like, uh an ideologue um versus someone who is a quote idealist. And I believe in that as I've gotten older, I'm more of a sort of pragmatic.
Yeah, I was just, I was thinking that exact phrase, pragmatic idealist is like the right combination.
You and I could have a good cup of coffee sometime, but um no, that's that's where I, that's probably part of my evolution as a as a human being.
Yeah.
Um and and I still, I realize that, you know, like my pacifism is really str- challenged and and uh.
Right.
We live in a very imperfect world and like what's happening right now, it has been happening for almost a year in Ukraine. Um it's it's hard to understand or or fathom, you know, what could be an effective, you know, nonviolent response, non-war.
Right, right.
So that's been a real challenge, but ultimately, what has guided me honestly, uh Kurt, this is really important that my Christian faith. You know, the um the Beatitudes, the Sermon on the Mount, or things that I I um I I radiate towards. That's been really, really important to me and it's helped guide, you know, you hear a lot about the golden rule and all that stuff. But it it's helped guide how I try to be with people and and how I try to be honest. Um you know, maybe I've told a few white lies over the years.
Yeah.
But my faith is important.
If it's only a few, you're doing better than most.
But I also don't like to wear it on my sleeve, you know, my my Christian faith.
Yeah, I think that's fair because a lot of people hear that you're a Christian and they've been hurt by a Christian or, you know. Feeling like they've been uh judged by a Christian or or things, I like to say, I. Part of the reason I'm a Christian is because I need more grace than the average person. Because I have more terrible thoughts and all those things perhaps, I don't know. Um one more question, uh. Most people don't know this, or quite a few people do, but I was five foot one until the end of my sophomore year in high school. So and then I got a massive growth spurt and turned into this tall guy, but how tall are you, John? You must be only about that tall too, five three or four or something?
Dart, I missed the growth spurt. To your question, uh I believe I'm five three, at least that's what my driver's license says.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, as you get older, sometimes that changes, but five three, I think is fair, I mean, that's what I, when I have a physical exam, I.
That that's where you're measuring?
Yeah.
Well, you've got almost, because you, little guys don't ever get this, but tall guys, especially tall, skinny, wimpy guys. Have experienced Little Man Syndrome a lot or Napoleon Syndrome, you are almost completely absent of that uh heavily prevalent. Uh disease among short guys. So compliments to you on that.
Well, I I appreciate that and again, I want to be cautious, this is not necessarily a therapy session. Uh but I I once again, to be honest, um you know, being small, maybe looking a little bit different. And that gets back to maybe the relationship thing. There's always been a lo- I'll be honest, there's always been a level of insecurity.
Yeah.
And and I've had to overcome that and I think overall I have and when people say, you know, if you're gonna be an elected official or a politician. You gotta be a a mega extrovert, on the Myers-Briggs, I'm actually right on the line between I and E. And and um I typically am kind of on the introvert side, but once I get going, then it's easier, but I. You know, you go to the parties or this and that, it it's hard for me to, I have to break through before I can really start engaging.
No, I feel you and frankly.
Gosh.
That being that, I I was Kurt the Squirt, I was four foot eleven when I got to seventh grade and I was five foot one at the end of my tenth grade. And so for four years, I basically didn't grow when everybody else was getting big and I carried that. You know, even after I got to be that strapping six two, one hundred and thirty pound college freshman, I still, I was so scared. Uh uh of approaching a girl or anything like that and so I can appreciate that sentiment, how it takes a while. And and in your case, you didn't have that growth spurt, so.
No, I, yeah, and and you know, it's interesting, approaching a girl and 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 that's my orientation, of course.
Yeah, yeah.
I remember growing up. I remember growing up, you know, I, I always had a lot of good friends. I mean, people felt like a safe space with me.
Yeah.
And oftentimes, you know, the quote, the girls would let me hang out with them and they'd share all this stuff with me. I'm like, why, you know, but it would really, it was, it was really hard because, um,
Yeah.
Because they would be saying, well, this is how I feel about this person. And then I really didn't have the, the security or the courage to say, well, by the way, I actually.
I think yours well.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, if there's somebody out there that's listening and they, like you've, you've kind of achieved moving past it. Um, and maybe that's just the time of experience, but is there any words you'd have for somebody that just is feeling awkward about that time in their space? Or they're just, whether they're, they don't have to be short, they don't have to be tall, that, cause everybody just about feels awkward about themselves.
I, I, I think it's important, you know, you hear a lot about this, but I just think that folks, you know, h- h- how you grow up and, I mean, those of us who have been in loving families are at a, at an advantage. You know, if, if, like Mila with her two parents.
Yeah.
This kid is like mega-loved and that helps to strengthen, you know, what your image of yourself. So I think it's really important to try to love yourself as much as possible. And, and to, you know, to affirm who you are. And I think that is really critical, you know, a- a- in terms of interacting with other people, whether it's for friendships, platonic, or, or perhaps more than that.
Well, I think that's frankly, one of the advantages of having faith in your life is that it's so reinforced that God loves me. And if God, with all of his powers and capabilities and strength and whatever loves me, then maybe I should too.
Well, and then the as- another aspect of that, I, I suppose, is, um, you know, this whole idea of forgiveness and redemption.
Sure.
I, I think it's important to be able to forgive and, and to recognize that you also can be forgiven, cause we don't always get it right.
Yeah. Uh, I think the culture is shifting a little bit to, you know, when, when ten-year-old videos are dug out and, and used as a reason to cancel somebody or things like that, it's a really interesting place, right? Um, because grace doesn't have the same kind of place in the non-believer a- as we tie to.
And, and, and I guess one other point I'll make perhaps is that, um, I think that the, the human spirit is incredibly, uh, strong and resilient. Unless it's been, you know, unless it's been crushed and, you know, there's all kinds of ways that we can be hurt and, and traumatized.
Well, we can respond to it in different ways.
We can respond to it in different ways. Uh, but I think ultimately the, you know, the human spirit is really powerful and resilient. And, um, it, it helps us to overcome adversity.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause adversity is part of life.
That's, uh, that what doesn't kill you makes you stronger, right? Except for bears, they'll kill you.
I have a good grizzly bear story.
Yeah. Well, I think it's time. Uh, let's move on to the Loco Experience. So this is the crazy story from your lifetime.
You set that up, huh?
Uh, you know, not intentionally, but, uh, I, I flow with my words pretty solid. Uh, let's hear it. Let's, uh.
Yeah, I'll try to give you the, goodness gracious, I'll try to give you the Cliff Notes version. But, um, so I graduated from CSU in May of seventy-eight, I suppose.
Okay.
And actually I started working for, um, we helped start recycling in, in Fort Collins with Kelly Olson.
Oh, really? Oh, that's cool.
I don't know if you remember, recycle something. And I, a lot of interesting memories about the original recycling center, which was right there.
Yeah, no, I wasn't around it yet.
Right there by North Side Azatlan. But all that said, I decided, um, I wanted to, I needed to take an adventure. So I, in August of, of seventy-eight, I got my backpack and back then it was an external frame.
Right.
And, um, I hitchhiked to Fairbanks, Alaska.
Okay.
And I remember, uh, I remember someone dropping me off at the intersection in La Porte and Overland Trail there.
Okay.
And I had a little cardboard sign that said, Fairbanks, Alaska. And I had my pack and cars would drive by and they were like.
Well, that's the right highway. I mean, two D seven goes up there a long ways.
But I had a marker and I realized, okay, a little bit at a time. So I actually put Laramie, Wyoming, and I actually made great progress. It took me ten days, but I made it to Fairbanks. I had some friends there. And the friend that I was visiting with, it was actually one of the reasons with, uh, that my, uh, my wife, you know, went, went to Alaska. And they didn't, they didn't, they weren't together for very long.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but.
But that was part of the connection there.
That was part of the connection. So went to Fairbanks. And, um, my friend, uh, who, who wrote a, you might relate to this, a Norton. We were into British, uh, cars and, and motorcycles, Triumphs and Nortons. He apparently got in a big accident. He was all in a cast, so he couldn't hike. So I, I wanted to hike Denali Park and, um, I'd planned this week-long trip. I was gonna go solo. And the, um, I, I, I got, I hitchhiked to Fairbanks. I took the bus all the way into, you know, where I was gonna put in. And I remember hiking, uh, on the tundra there about three miles and, and to set up camp. Uh, but that night was amazing, cause I was all by myself, um, on the tundra.
Northern lights rocking out.
The nor- gosh, the northern, I, I got the whole, I got the triple, uh, the northern lights rocking out. Then at some point the, the, a full moon came up and Denali, you could see it, cause it wasn't, it wasn't kind. So that was an amazing evening. Next morning, I, um, I had a big pack, cause it was like a sixty-pound pack and going back to the five foot three thing. It took me a while to get that pack on. Broke camp, had breakfast, broke camp, was getting ready to put my pack on and I see this grizzly bear, uh, charging towards me. And I thought to myself, that's not good.
Right.
So, um, long story short, I, I set the pack down. I backed away. I got down on the ground. I sort of played dead. Although I had my camera and I tried to take a couple of pictures, but that didn't work out.
So he wasn't charging you specifically? He was just curious, kind of running upon you almost?
But I think, I think I had some things in my pack that put out a scent, like, you know, you're not really supposed to bring any fresh food. I might've had some carrots or scallions. That's a good one.
Right.
Um, so in the end, he wound up going for the pack. He tore it apart.
Wow.
Um, I was there, kind of stuck there for at least an hour or so. I would, um, he would stop and go by the stream, kind of lie down, take a nap. I'd get up and move. And eventually I was able to get away, but, uh, that was my.
Leave your pack behind?
Uh, it was, it was demolished. And then I made it back to the road and told the Rangers, they went back down there. Well, first they said to me, well, you should've just thrown a rock, some rocks at him. It might've caused him, you know, to, to go the other way.
And you're like, it's a big bear.
A big bear, yes. And I said to them, well, that's easy for you to say, cause you guys went down there to look at what happened. And you had tranquilizer guns, for example.
And a backup high-power rifle.
So in the end, the bear was there, bear went off. It was a, it was an area. They had different areas that they, the way they did their backpacking, you know, they, um, the, the backcountry permits and all of that. And it was an area where there had been a lot of encounters between humans and bears.
Yeah.
And, and they picked up the pieces of my, uh, of my pack and, and, uh, needless to say, my trip was, um, my one-week backpack trip was cut short.
Right.
So I had to hitchhike back with a duffel bag.
Well, I appreciate you taking time to, to spend with this bear, uh, on our podcast today. And, uh, oh, that's, that's part of my, my crazy heritage, by the way. Um, cause I was born in August of seventy-four and seventy-four is the year of the tiger. August is the month of Leo. And so I'm lion and tiger and bear by birth.
That's great. I, I can see that in you.
John, um, is there any last words of wisdom out there? Or if somebody wants to find you, can they just like email you or something like that at the county or?
Sure. Um, I'm not sure if I have any additional words of wisdom, if I have any words of wisdom. I just wanna say that I actually have enjoyed this a lot.
Good.
And I really appreciate you rethinking of me. Um, and I hope there's some value to our conversation to other folks who might listen. So thank you very much for this experience.
Pleasure.
Uh, in terms of, um, you know, if folks want to contact me for county business, you know, my email is jkafalas@larimer.org. My cell phone number is public, seven two zero two five four seven five nine eight. And if it's for personal political stuff, as long as Frye is still with us, Front Range Internet.
All right.
Uh, I have johnk1@frye.com is the, what I use for, you know, things that, that are not county business. Cause I separate it out.
Well, I've enjoyed this very much as well. And, um, I would be happy to spend another two hours with you. Uh, and we might not do it on a podcast over coffee instead. So know that I, I look forward to that opportunity too.
That would be great. And perhaps if you get fabulous reviews on this podcast, who knows, maybe in a year or two, you might wanna have me back.
I would have you back for sure, for sure. Uh, but, but we probably will wait for at least a year, cause that's the way we do things around here. But, uh, yeah, share it with all your friends. I know you got a lot more friends than I do probably after twenty years of service plus.
Yeah, that's a, that's, I run into a lot of folks, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you. It's been a joy. And sincerely appreciate all your service and, and your time here today.
Thank you, Kurt.
Godspeed.
Thank you for listening to this episode. This is Alma Ferrer, producer of the Loco Experience Podcast. If you enjoyed this program and would like to support the show, please share it with your favorite people and leave us a review. To see upcoming guests, behind-the-scenes footage and more, follow us on Instagram, Facebook and LinkedIn, at The Loco Experience. Subscribe to never miss the latest interview. And until next time, stay loco.